Ready? I'd like to call to order, please, the City Council Work Session on Monday, January 25. We believe the time is 4:30. I'm going to make this request before we start. Could we get the clocks to sync? We have one back there and one here. We've had it that way for a couple of years or so, so is there a way we can do that? I would really appreciate it.
Yes, Mayor, we'll get them synced back up.
Okay. I know we could all look at our iPhones and get it, but it would be nice to have it synchronized in the room. You can imagine what goes on in court when the guy thinks he's going to be off the stand and he's looking at that clock and looking at that clock, so, all right, here we go. I have to announce this evening that Councilman Osborne will not be in attendance, she is not in the area. We have two items on the agenda tonight, and we'll start with 3.1, and staff will present the results of the 2015 satisfactory survey, and I believe that Anna Garcia, Management Assistant, will introduce.
Hi, Mary Council, can you guys hear me okay? The City of Goodyear partnered again with the National Research Center to conduct the citizen satisfaction survey. I have with me Demema Mann, who did present the last time. We conduct the citizen satisfaction survey to gauge resident satisfaction with city services. The results are used to determine what services are performed well, what needs improvement, what are lacking as perceived by the city's number-one customer, residents. In years past, city council and management have utilized the results to make improvements to city services and/or pursue new ones. We conducted the citizen satisfaction survey, we do it about every two years. We last collected data January and February of 2014. This time around, we collected data in October and November of 2015 to be better prepared for a new budget year discussion. So I'm going to hand it off to Demema, and she's going to present the results.
Welcome.
Thank you, thanks for having me, it's great to be back in Goodyear, and I wanted to also thank Anna Garcia for all of the work she's done on this project. She's been our primary contact, and she's been terrific to work with. As Anna mentioned, we just recently conducted the National Citizen Survey, or the NCS as we refer to it, for Goodyear for the second time. And if you've had a chance to review the reports from this year or also from 2014, you'll see that we generally organize the reports around these three pillars of community livability, and we've identified those as community characteristics, governance, and participation. And the NCS is designed to be a pretty omnibus citizen survey to measure community livability as a whole, and it's also a pretty standardized tool that was developed by my firm, National Research Center, and we offer it in partnership with ICMA, the International City and County Management Association. And that level of standardization allows us to keep costs low while providing a high-quality tool, and also has allowed us to create benchmark ratings for each of the items on the survey, so I'll get a little bit into that more in a minute. Within those three pillars of governance, we've identified eight facets of community livability through some extensive research into models for community livability, and you'll see these eight facets repeated throughout the reports as well, and those are safety, natural environment, mobility, built environment, economy, education and enrichment, recreation and wellness, and community engagement. As Anna mentioned, this is the second time we've conducted the NCS for Goodyear, the first time was in January and February of 2014, and then this past follow-up survey was conducted in October and November of 2015. I believe that the shift was to allow council and staff to have more time with the results in the planning process, but it has been, even though it's, you know, only one calendar year apart, it's technically more like a two-year difference between the surveys. It was a random and scientific sample of 3,000 households within Goodyear city limits. We received a total of 657 completed surveys for an overall response rate of 23 percent. That response rate is in line with the last response rate we had for Goodyear survey, and within the average range of what we typically see for this kind of survey. The number of completed surveys gives us a margin of error of plus or minus 4 percent around the 2015 data. And in addition to the National Citizen Survey basic service, Goodyear also chose to have us create some additional reports, a report by geographic area, and a report of demographic subgroup comparisons, which breaks the results out by some of the socio-demographic characteristics on the survey. I'm not going to spend too much time talking about those because there's so much data, but they're a great tool if you want to be able to drill down into some of the results, if you want to look at specific questions to see if ratings were different by geography or by some of the socio-demographics. And this is just a map of the male sample to give you an overview of the households that were sampled, and these different colors here, that light green is North Goodyear, the blue is Central Goodyear, and that pink is South Goodyear, and that was how we broke out that geographic subgroup comparison report by those three areas. This map gives you a sense of our national benchmark comparison database. As I mentioned earlier, one of the benefits of conducting the NCS is that we have compiled survey data from about 600 communities across the country that have asked the same questions as Goodyear, and that database is really unique in its size and type. And what we're able to do is for every item on the National Citizen Survey, we've been able to create an average rating for it, so we can tell you, in addition to giving you your data, is this higher than what we typically see, similar to it, or lower? And overall, we've made it pretty difficult to be higher than or lower than the benchmark. You need to be 10 points higher than the average rating to be considered higher than the benchmark, or at least 10 points lower to be considered lower than the benchmark. And the reason for that is we want to try and help make this data actionable, and areas where Goodyear is higher than the benchmark should be considered areas where the city is truly excelling, and areas lower than the benchmark could potentially be, you know, there's potential room for improvement depending on, you know, what the actual item is and if it's a city priority, and so forth. So what we saw here is pretty much what we would expect to see. Similarly, we would assume that most ratings would remain pretty stable over time, which is what we saw when comparing the 2015 ratings to 2014. Over 100 items remained stable over time, seven improved, and 17 were trending down. And when you're looking at the ratings between years, you've got a trends over time report that gets into a lot of detail for each of the items on the survey. The margin of error to keep in mind when comparing the data over time is 5 percent, so any differences of less than 5 percent, we would not consider to be statistically significant.
Jill?
I think you're following probably the notes I have here, so would it make sense just to comment as we kind of go through?
Whatever you'd like.
Okay. Going back to the 17 received lower, a couple of them that kind of grabbed my attention as we went through there. Well, as we talk about the pillars, I'm just going through the summary sheet that was there. It kind of grabbed my attention was within the facet of recreation and wellness and health and safety seemed to be degrees, additional air quality ratings in Goodyear increased survey for years, while rating for overall image of reputation decreased. Now, I'm not sure, we've spent a lot of time and effort on trying to increase our image...
On air quality, you're saying?
Well, I'm going through the summary here. The one that jumped out at me was the overall image and reputation, because that one we really work on to try to, you know, get people involved in the community, and that's one area that just kind of jumped out at me there. Also, when it talked about some of the pillars of the governance tend to be stable over time, some ratings increased such as emergency preparedness, which I like, public libraries because we have a new one where people are starting to use, but we also raised these decrease, and this is what kind of jumped out at me, fire prevention, street cleaning, open space, storm drainage, utility billing, and land usage, and planning and zoning. Now, those decreased, and I guess, and I don't need the answer right now, but I was looking for follow-up on why we think they may have decreased. And that's what I kind of got out of that first piece of the summary, because I went through the summary, I looked at the data, but you're right, it's a lot of data to drill down into, but the summary or executive summaries, which I like, I zero in on, and that's what I kind of zeroed in on this first piece that you have here.
And I think it's, you know, I think it's worth celebrating when things have improved, but also, you know, if you think they're improving for no real reason, then maybe not, you know, and I think also, you know, it's right to investigate what's decreasing and see if you can kind of puzzle together why. I do know that the changes in ratings we saw, even though we considered these to be statistically significant because they were greater than 5 percent, I think they were all still pretty slight. So sometimes there's kind of an outlier, kind of a year, I mean, it'd be interesting to see next time if these stay where they are, or they could possibly go back up, so that's something to keep in mind, and, you know, a lot of the items of the 17 had to do, fell in that pillar of participation, so it was just some rates of participation were declining rather than actual services.
And that's the only reason why I bring it up, because that kind of zeroed in on to, because those are things that we really spent some time on working on, and there's some others as you get through some of the other surveys that are summaries that jumped out at me, but, you know, especially when the image and the participation and how many we have that participate in our citizens who give of their time freely to help us a variety of things, so that kind of jumped out at me a little bit, especially on the reputation and, so, just for follow-up, we can kind of look to see possibly have any underlying data, why, if there's something specific that caught them that we're unaware of that we can improve on.
Yeah, and I think when we are looking at that, looking at those cross-tab reports, you know, looking at those specific items to see, you know, is it that, you know, in two of the geographic areas, ratings were still really high for overall image, but maybe in one, it's a lot lower, and maybe there's, you know, a geographic, something happening geographically, or with the demographics too.
And again, I appreciate it's a small percentage, but at the same token, you know, I'm a teacher, nothing's perfect, always want to improve, so if we see some things or areas that are actually going down, I'd just like to know what's the cause and effect, and maybe we can make some improvements on those.
Well, I think you could see geographically. There were some bells that went off in that respect. Bill?
I have to, I just got this when I sat down, so I'm going through it quickly. Is there, is there a geographic breakdown in here?
Yes.
Yes.
No, by geography, okay. The, thank you for that. The other, you know, we're having this discussion about, you know, maybe it's the survey, maybe it's the respondent, et cetera, but, and I know that this isn't representative of much, but services provided by the federal government was actually increased over 14, which really leads me to question even the validity of everything, because we know that what we're getting from the federal government is far less in this survey period than it was the last time we did it. So is there, and we're seeing it, it's similar to the benchmark, but it's just very ironic that we don't get much in federal help or aid in the community, and that we're actually getting a sense that that has increased or improved over time, and I'm just kind of baffled by that, so do you see that often? Is that, that's kind of a variable question.
Yeah, we do see some fluctuation, you know, whether it's going up or down in other communities with that. It could sort of just have to do with the general perception of government as a whole. I mean, your average resident is probably not aware of differences in funding received from the federal government, you know, at the local government level. You know, honestly, what, one of the most informative things, one of the reasons why we have that question on the survey is we ask it along with asking about the overall quality of services provided by Goodyear, and, you know, invariably, all respondents across the, pretty much across the board wherever we survey, feel much more positively about their own local government and a lot more negatively about the federal government, and so it's kind of a nice comparison to have. Usually, ratings for the local government are about twice as high as federal.
Right, and that's why, that's why for me, I'm looking at it saying it went from 35 to 41, 6 percent pretty meets the statistical threshold, so it's significantly higher. It remains about half of the services provided by Goodyear, but like, our trust in our, what we're getting out of the federal government is decreasing every year, and it's just interesting that in this survey, it actually went up, so...
And again, you know, it is statistically significant, but it is still fairly small, so it'd be interesting to see, you know, if that was a trend that continues, or, you know, if it went down a few more points, you know, next time, and therefore, it's kind of actually turns into a flat line.
Okay.
Mayor? Wally?
Do you find that in other cities that you've surveyed that their federal government answers were higher? And I'm wondering if it's folks that are now under Obamacare and they feel that that's a service the government is giving them, and that's why they rated it higher, because we didn't have that before.
Yeah, I don't think there's an overall trend, you know, nationwide with that item, but I think that that could be something folks are thinking of when they're answering that question, absolutely.
I'm sorry.
I'm done.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We were talking about, why didn't you mention that? You want to mention that, Sherry?
No, I was just noticing throughout all of it, there's, sometimes there's some striking differences for South as opposed to...
To North.
North, and then Central sometimes kind of bounces back and forth depending what the issue is.
Yeah.
Overall, it did seem that when there are significant differences for the geographic subgroups, that the most positive ratings tended to come from the north.
Yes.
Well, I thought it was powerful to see that, because it goes in line with some of the things we've said we need to do in certain parts of the area, and I think the central of the area really shows up in this, so I think it substantiates what we've been talking about, so.
Great.
Go ahead.
These are those eight facets of community livability again, and there's a question on the survey itself where we ask residents to rate each of these items, we ask them how much of a priority, if at all, they should be for the Goodyear community to focus on in the next two years, and residents identified safety and economy as the most important facets for the community to focus on, and that is what we typically see when we ask this question, those are the items that tend to come to the surface. Not always in every community, there can be some variability, but not a huge surprise, and those were also the focus areas identified by residents in Goodyear in 2014 as well. So that's what the stars there indicate, and then the color of all of these facets is the same, this kind of medium blue, and that means that overall ratings tended to be similar to the benchmark within each of those facets, so they're positive and tend to be on par with other communities. Now, I'll get into the key findings from the Community Livability Report, and kind of go over some of the highlights of the survey. And the first is that quality of life ratings remain extremely high in Goodyear. Overall, about 88 percent rated their overall quality of life as excellent or good, and almost all rating Goodyear as a place to live as excellent or good. These ratings were very positive and remained stable from 2014 to 2015, and were similar to the national benchmark. When looking at some community characteristics, you can see that almost all rated their neighborhoods as a place to live as excellent or good, and at least four and five giving excellent or good ratings to Goodyear as a place to raise children, as a place to retire, and the overall appearance of Goodyear, and...
I suppose it looks like a place that you should be able to sustain from the children, staying, I mean, jobs and economic development is very important in this in order to get them from the neighborhood, you know, from raising kids to a place to retire.
And Goodyear as a place to retire, that was one of the items that was higher than the benchmark.
Yeah.
So that was definitely a standout rating for Goodyear. The ratings for Goodyear as a place to retire were much higher than what we typically see.
Wally?
On my overall image, is that the same as the overall appearance?
No, those are separate items.
Those are two separate, okay, sorry.
So overall image was 75 percent excellent or good, and had been 81 percent excellent or good in 2014.
Okay.
So again, with a, you know, it is statistically significant, but when it's slight like that, it might be more of a, you know, a reason for watchful waiting than necessarily...
Jill?
Just curious, the overall appearance at 82 percent, 84 was the place to retire, was above benchmark, what's the benchmark, I mean, how close were we, is it on that 82?
Overall? I'd have to look at that for that specific item. You know, to be, to be higher than the benchmark, you have to be at least 10 points higher, so it's pretty substantial. I think that, yeah, I just don't know, we don't put the benchmark numbers in the reports, so I can't look at it right now, but I could, I could when I'm back in the office.
The only reason why I ask is, and I have mentioned it several times up on this dais, people have visited, I always get high marks for the overall appearance of the city as far as how well it's maintained, you know, and it's, from the weed controls, from our right-of-ways, to our medians and whatever, so, yeah, I get it all the time talking about it, and I don't know if they're comparing it to, you know, to maybe cities similar to ours, that's why it's at 82, but I always felt we were kind of high on that. One area, though, that I, that kind of, when you talk about the demographics, when you get in it, what I found interesting was that the female respond more positive than the males.
Well, well.
Okay, okay, I know.
I'm sorry, that is a surprise to you?
You're actually shocked by that?
Yes, and then I also found the age groups between 18 and 34 have a higher rating than those in the older, so the younger group has a more positive...
Well, women mature faster than men, you heard that.
Yeah, that could be. Trust me, with my growing-up experience, I buy that, all right? But, yeah, I found it with the demographics, when you look at certain areas within the demographics, I found it kind of interesting. No real surprises of why some of them viewed us, maybe it's because of the services that we provide or whatever, especially when you're looking at young, you know, versus the older crowd, on where that's kind of coming from. You know, I don't, I don't know what your thoughts were when you saw those demographic breakdowns, if we were that unusual for a city this size and this population to break, or...
Um, no, I think, you know, the main thing to keep in mind when you're looking at that report is what kind of what we try to look for are the overall trends, you know, is that age group consistently giving higher ratings when there are differences, and, you know, or are they clustered in certain areas? I mean, you know, like, generally, older adults when we're breaking results out by age tend to be more involved in the community, tend to participate more, are more likely to have gone to a meeting, that sort of thing, and sometimes that can mean that they're more critical of the process, or sometimes, sometimes they get more positive ratings, but it's interesting to see that differences.
And the only reason why I ask is our demographics tends to be younger, even though we do have retirement communities, is what's the average age, was it in the 30s, was it? Something like that in our demographics?
I think 35 is our...
Okay, and which I find it interesting, is a great place to retire, but where does that come into the ones that are 30 to 40 years old, because they're not ready to retire yet, so are we delivering services for them that they're looking for?
No, they want jobs, and we don't have enough here in Goodyear.
So again, it's, it tells, at least to me, you kind of read between the lines when you see some of those stats, what that's telling me.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
We also asked residents how likely they would be to recommend living in Goodyear to someone that asked, and if they plan to remain in Goodyear for the next five years, and almost all were likely to do both. Those percentages were similar to what they were in 2014, and were similar to the benchmarks as well. The next key finding has to do with the safety being one of the key focus areas identified by residents. Overall, feeling of safety, about 89 percent excellent or good, which was stable from 2014 to 2015, and similar to the national benchmark. At least nine in 10 reported feeling safe in their neighborhoods, and in Goodyear's downtown or commercial area, and again, those ratings were stable and similar as well.
We don't have a downtown.
Well, the wording on the survey is downtown slash commercial area, so whatever people think of as...
Any of our commercial, you know, okay, so it's probably on Litchfield, and it's probably on Cotton Lane, and it's probably at the Power Center, so those are our little areas where they would do that, but you have to, you have to figure a downtown, so we don't really, we have spots of downtowns. Okay?
I just thought that was kind of strange.
Well...
Safety services were rated very positively, at least four and five giving excellent or good ratings to fire, ambulance or EMS services, police services, and crime prevention, and those were stable over time and similar to the benchmark. The next key finding has to do with economy, which is also identified as a top priority by residents. When looking at aspects of economy, you can see that about two-thirds giving excellent or good ratings to the overall economic health, Goodyear as a place to visit, and about 61 percent giving excellent or good ratings to the overall quality of businesses and services. A majority giving excellent or good ratings to cost of living, and also to shopping opportunities, then only about a third giving excellent or good ratings to employment opportunities.
There's your downtown, Wally.
And that's, well, the employment opportunities, while that's a, you know, a fairly lower rating, that's still similar to the national benchmark, because that's just not a rating that tends to be very high in comparison communities either, but there you go, the vibrant downtown, which is, it's worded the same way, I believe, as the other one, which is downtown slash commercial area, but you can see that that's, that's one of the aspects where Goodyear was lower than the benchmark. And those all remain stable over time. One of the features of the National Citizen Survey is that there's about three-quarters of a page on the survey to ask questions that are completely specific to Goodyear, and this is one of those custom questions, and we've put it here in the economy section because it has to do directly with that, but this question asked residents, how frequently, if ever, do you travel outside of Goodyear for the following purposes? And you can see, this was asked on a scale of two times a week or more, two to four times a month, once a month or less, or not at all, so this is the percentage that said two times a week or more, or two to four times a month, and you can see, you know, a majority saying that they do leave pretty regularly for shopping and dining.
So I'm assuming these figures will help economic development, does it? Okay, could we send them to Maysurish tomorrow? Appreciate it.
And this question was asked in 2014 as well, and these percentages have remained pretty much in line, they haven't, they haven't been changing.
Jill?
No, I was just going to say, that's no surprise, we've been pushing, trying to get more entertainment, more dining, more shopping opportunities, and you can see they're going outside quite a bit of percentage per time, so, again, hopefully, that's what we're working on, and hopefully those will change next time we do this, to the good.
Working in Goodyear, of course, definitely a very important part of the economy. Goodyear as a place to work was rated as excellent or good by 58 percent, and then again, about 31 percent rating employment opportunities as excellent or good.
Which is not bad when you think that, if you look at that figure, the way that economic development departments are trying to bring jobs in, and where we were before, I think that's quite strong. I've seen Michelle kind of nodding her head. It looks to me, I mean, it needs to be stronger than that, but that's more than I had anticipated, so is that the same as we had before?
It is, that has remained stable, and it's similar to the benchmark, so it is on par with comparison communities. We also asked residents if they work within Goodyear city limits, and about 30 percent said that they do, and that was a lower percentage than what we typically see.
Yeah, yeah. Sherry?
When you mentioned, I thought that was interesting, that it was of that question that the highest amount was up in the south end, 35 percent, and that's the farthest, you know, so it's good to see that people there are getting jobs here.
Yes.
Another custom question on the survey that was also asked in 2014, it read, please rate how important, if at all, it is for the city to add these types of employers, and this was asked on a scale of essential, very important, somewhat important, or not at all important, so this is the percent that said essential or very important, and you can see up at the top of the list, I mean, all of them being rated as at least very important by a majority of respondents, with medical and healthcare up at the top of the list, followed by retail. This question, in 2014, the rank order was the same, the same items at the top, and the same items slower down. The only difference is that some of these were rated as even more important in 2014 than in 2015. A little bit more importance was put on medical and healthcare, office and professional services, high tech was rated at 69 percent versus 63 percent this time around, but the proportions are all still very similar. Then, also in that custom question section, there were two other questions completely specific to Goodyear. The next was, please rate how important it is for the city to fund each of the following programs or amenities in order to improve the quality of life for residents in Goodyear. And you can see up at the top of that list, you know, 85 percent saying it's at least very important for maintaining and improving parks, followed by providing recreational opportunities, and then a majority thinking it's at least very important to bring higher education to Goodyear, provide senior services, providing childcare and after-school programs, investing in transit, and building a community center. And this was also asked in 2014, and also has remained stable. The final custom question asked residents, how much of a source, if any, each of these is for obtaining information about the city government and its activities, and you can see that the most commonly used sources were the city website, inFocus, local media outlets, and word of mouth, but still about half also saying city email notifications, and city council meetings, and other public meetings, and this was also in line with what we saw in 2014 when this question was asked.
Mayor? Bill?
What is the, oh, these are specific to Goodyear, so you're not going to have any benchmark, you're not going to have...
Correct, correct. The only benchmark, you know, we have is that we did ask this in 2014 for Goodyear so we can compare it over time, and that's remained stable.
Everything has remained stable?
For this, for this item, yes.
The thing that really bothers me is word of mouth.
The what?
The word of mouth.
Oh, yes.
Seventy-seven percent use that as their information source, and word of mouth is...
And, and what do we say when we're out? Our biggest problem is, is misinformation.
Correct.
Misinformation.
So, it's misinformation spread to misinformation, spread to misinformation, so...
Right.
Based on, I think, the brief conversation that the manager and I had today in our one-on-one, that may be something we want to think about putting into our strategic action plan, and how do we overcome word of mouth being a seventy-seven percent component of information getting out to the community? We need a strategy that overcomes that, and it...
And it's interesting, because if you look at the InFocus, it's eighty-four percent, and we have a great deal of information in the, so it's...
Right. So, I throw that out now, I realize that's something we're going to talk about in a couple of weeks, and I'm going to revisit it again in a couple of months, but if, I think if we don't take action on that, we're not doing our jobs. Social media is only at forty-three percent, so if we're putting a hundred hours a week into social media, we're not getting anything out of it. So, we got to either dump that and go into something else, or we've got to change our strategy.
So, we may have to go back to getting groups together to go to communities and talking.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying I have the answer, but it certainly is a, it falls to the strategic level of this council in getting the word out.
Well... Oh, I'm sorry, Cheryl Lynn had said that to me, I apologize.
Well, I was just, I, the thing I wanted to put out, when you look at the word of mouth, only twenty-seven percent of them are using it as their major source.
Thank God.
Yeah, so, but I'm just saying, that part of the culture that we've developed in Goodyear, it's, to me, it's, I, I'm torn, because that's what we want, we want people talking to each other, we want people discussing, we want people participating, we want them involved, and so, the word of mouth is, is a personal people-to-people thing. So, I'm not as sure that I'm as upset as you are, Bill, because, or as concerned as you are, because first of all, it's only twenty-seven percent that are using it as a major source. And I like the idea that people are talking and not just making their own decisions, and I, I love the interaction, so not disagreeing with, with the act, that you want to put your money where you're getting the most good, but I also would not discourage the person-to-person.
Good point.
And I wasn't suggesting we discourage it, I was just, we've got to make sure that when you and I are talking on the street corner, that what we're talking about, one of us has the right information, that's all, and, and making sure that we're doing that.
Joe?
I think she beat me.
Wally?
Well, I just wanted to say, when we go into the neighborhoods and we speak, we usually have, hopefully, the right information, because staff has given it to us, and we meet with our HOAs, some monthly, some every other month. So, we're out passing information on word of mouth to them, they in turn are passing it from us to them through their newsletters, through their HOAs. So, I don't know that seventy-seven percent really is a bad thing, because we really have become personal with these HOAs, where we're out there talking to them. And I'm on three e-groups of three different HOAs, and I'm talking to those people every single day about something that's going on in the city, or that I know about, and I'm asking them to pass the word. You know, so, I don't think that we're not doing our job, Bill, I know it's, it's kind of making us take a look at it for seventy-seven percent of the mouth, or seventy-seven percent. However, I do agree with Cheryl, because we are, we are very engaged in the community. And I think that's to our credit.
Isn't it, Cheryl? I think.
It's certainly a plus.
Yes, thank you.
Joe?
Mine's just a little different of approach. If the major source is the city website, the InFocus, and I know we didn't get anywhere last time on this, but I would put my efforts on the InFocus getting the message out, as well as getting out there one-on-ones, and the website, and maybe try to boost the, some of the social media a little bit, and, and put our efforts there to get it out, because, I mean, if, if you look at that city website, it what, sixty-three, and the city InFocus at forty-nine, you know, a little more effort on that, that might get in the fifties or sixties, or vice versa on the city website. So, I take a different approach. The ones that are working, that we have control over, I would rather try to throw some more effort in there to try to boost those numbers out, to get the information that you want, to make sure the public has the right information in hand, so, just a different approach.
I think I'm kind of on board with everybody here, that the, a lot of the person-to-person, like I know up in Australia, we have a lot of independent websites, and independent blogs and, and stuff, and some of them get the information, and check their sources, and do a great job, and some don't. So, I do what Wally does, I just try to like pop in and say, "No, this is what's going on," and, you know, you can't stop that, but I think if we keep just honing on what is the correct information, hopefully, it will filter out there.
Go ahead.
So, in conclusion, just to reiterate those key findings, quality of life is rated very well in Goodyear, and remains very high. Safety ratings are also quite solid, and a top priority. Economy also identified as a top priority, with potential room for improvement there, some of those items. And when asked about funding priorities, parks and recreation came out of the top of the list again in 2015.
And then to close, we've developed a marketing plan that's going to promote and highlight the positive results of this citizen satisfaction survey, seeing how ninety-three percent of our citizens say that Goodyear is an excellent or good place to live. So, if you guys can see this picture, it was taken by actually a four-year-old little girl at the pump track in Goodyear, and her mom posted it on Facebook. So, this is kind of what our marketing plan is going to entail, it's going to entail social media, the InFocus, our website, and we're going to utilize the hashtag, "The Good in Goodyear," and we're going to engage and ask citizens to post what they love about Goodyear via, you know, either a status update, a tweet, or a photo with that hashtag, and then we're going to highlight and randomly select what they post, and promote it on our, the InFocus. And then we're going to create, we've created an infographic, and that's going to highlight, and that's going to be on our website also.
Yeah, I do too, very well done, nice.
Do you guys have any questions?
No questions. I just want to thank you, I think it's enlightening, I read the entire thing, and I haven't highlighted, and not that I'll remember everything that's in the book, but I think it's very useful to us, I think it's very useful to us as we're going into our, finishing our retreats, and going into our strategic plan, how, whether we want to change it, or we don't want to change it, so it's valuable information, so I really, I really appreciate, and a nice job. Bill?
Can we get a comparison geographically, on the, of the geographic breakdown by the two years? I see the geographic breakdown in here is just for this year's survey, but can we see it geographically from the last survey to this survey, to see if we've had any change geographically as well?
We did do that analysis and provide a report like that in 2014. I'm not sure how, how we might do a side-by-side comparison like that, but we could definitely take a look at that for you.
Because I think that would, that might be helpful, because we've identified that we've got this geographic split that's going on, and trying to figure out, are we improving? Are we going down? We're trying to, you know, put some efforts into things in the middle of the city, so if we, even if we use this year as the, as the baseline, we'll know the next time if we're building the things and repairing the things that we've said, whether they're making a difference or not.
Actually, we should be able to put together some tables for you.
Okay, thanks.
Joe?
Just want to make sure it was captured, and I talked about earlier, those points that dropped five percent below, to see if we can figure out why, you know, because as I'd mentioned earlier, some of those issues, when they had to come with our perception of the community, et cetera, why that would fare with all the efforts we put in, are we putting our efforts in the right place? Like to hear, I'd like to see something back on that, on those pieces where they said, for some reason, we've, we've fallen a little bit, so, okay?
Okay, thank you very much, ladies, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
The next item is three point two. Council, you will receive an update on the history and the current status, development agreements related to the fire services in Australia, and, and information on how certain high-growth areas of the city compare to the 2014 triggers and thresholds for new fire station construction. We have two individuals here tonight, Paul Luizzi, Fire Chief, and Christopher Baker, Development Services Director. Gentlemen?
Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present this evening to you. Chief Luizzi and I are here tonight with the primary purpose of doing two things. Number one is to provide a history of Australia and the, and the current status of development agreements related to fire service in the community. And then we're also going to provide you information on the certain high-growth areas, and how they compare with the 2014 trigger and thresholds for new fire station construction. And as part of our conversation this evening, we're also going to touch base on the capital improvement plan, and the funding for future stations and apparatus. Finally, we'll also have some recommended next steps for you. So, again, tonight, just the agenda, we're, first, we're going to touch on Australia, provide an overview of the community itself, we'll provide you some information relative to the development activity that's taken place south of the Ray Road alignment, and we'll also talk about fire agreements south of the Ray Road alignment. So, let's jump right in to providing the overview of Australia. The community, as you know, is located in the city south of the Gila River, just off of Australia Parkway. The project began in nineteen eighty-six, and comprises some twenty thousand acres. The first component of Australia opened in nineteen eighty-eight, is the Mountain Ranch Village, there are three primary villages of Australia. The Mountain Ranch Village is approximately seventy-four percent built out, some thirty-five hundred of the forty-seven hundred lots or so have been developed. And what I'd like to point out for you on the right hand of this slide is, is an image of the southern part of, portion of Australia. Ray Road, which you'll hear us refer to in our presentation this evening, terminates at the intersection of Rainbow Valley on the west side, and you'll see that dark blue, I think it's blue, is it blue? Blue, okay. Blue dashed line going east-west is what we refer to as the Ray Road alignment. That's in the approximate location of where Calistoga enters, the current-day Calistoga intersects Australia Parkway, where the Montecito Village is of Australia as well. And then all the way further, further south on the bottom is the, is what we know now as Cantomea. So, as I indicated, there's three primary villages in Australia, there's the Mountain Ranch portion, which I indicated is approximately seventy-five percent built out. It is the location of the current fire station one eighty-two, which has the white star up there in the northern portion, portion, excuse me. You'll see the dashed blue line, that represents the Ray Road alignment, and then a little bit further south of the Ray Road alignment is the second primary village, Montecito. It developed, began development in two thousand and seven, and then further south is Cantomea, the third primary village, and you'll notice that there is a, what I believe is a yellow star, I am colorblind, by the way, a yellow star, that's the proposed fire station one eighty-six. Cantomea also began construction in two thousand and nine. So, again, what's taken place in, south of the Ray Road alignment, and since two thousand and seven and two thousand and nine? Well, currently, there are sixteen hundred and twenty-seven platted lots, that means those are lots that the, the council has approved. Through November of two thousand and fifteen, there's approximately six hundred and fifty homes that are constructed, which means there's an inventory of some nine hundred and eighty lots.
So, a little bit of background on the fire service. So, in the mid nineteen nineties, the Goodyear Fire Department began providing fire and emergency services in Australia, and served the community from a temporary awning that was placed on the fire station site, the site that it's at right now, with a single fire engine that was manned by volunteers. To better meet the demands in the area, a permanent fire station, one eighty-two, at its site, as it is today, at Spring Drive in Australia Parkway, was constructed in two thousand and two and two thousand and three.
So, let me provide, if I can, for a minute or two, a little bit of history about the fire agreements in Australia. Back in two thousand, in the early two thousands, when the property was under consideration for zoning entitlements, the council in two thousand and four, at that time, placed a zoning entitlement, a zoning stipulation on the property. And essentially, the two thousand and four stipulation said that there needed to be an operating fire station by the time there was the five hundred and first building permit, and that was in two thousand and four. In two thousand and five, subsequent to that, what is now known as Cantomea came forth to the council for some subdivision action. And at that time, the council placed a stipulation on that approval that indicated that the Cantomea project needed to participate with Newland and the city to provide fire service. That was in two thousand and five. The culmination of those two stipulations was such that there was a development agreement entered into between the developers of what is now known Cantomea, the TUSA, and Newland, the developers of Australia, and the city, with this fire station agreement in two thousand and six. And essentially, that agreement said that that two thousand and four stipulation has been satisfied, and it put certain financial obligations on the develop, on the, on the developers. They were committed by virtue of that agreement to provide some four point one million dollars towards the costs and construction and equipping of a fire station, they also had to provide the land. And then they were also to provide some seven point five million dollars in O and M monies over twenty quarterly payments, and that was in, in two thousand, that was in two thousand and six.
Okay, so now we're going to talk about some of the fire.
Wait, can we go, can we go back?
Joe, I mean, Bill, go ahead.
The amendment that was provided, and reading the staff report from May of two thousand and six, indicates the council's continued concern about fire and emergency response times to villages seven and nine within phase two of Australia Mountain Ranch, in addition to this work. So, yes, the, while the stipulation for zoning may have been met, the concern about the response times in that area still existed when this was, and I think that's important for everybody to know, that the council, while they agreed to make the change, to allow the funding mechanism to change into put in the hundred and, or five hundred and first building permit benchmark, never satisfied their concern at that time, or quite frankly, my concern today, about the response times to that area of the city. And I think we just kind of glossed over that, and I think it's important that we stop and kind of reflect on that for a minute before we plow through. Thanks.
Joe?
Just a general question, since you threw out the dollar amounts that we have here. Currently, what is an annual cost to operate a fire station right now? Everything, electricity, personnel, put money aside for replacement equipment, do you have any idea what the total operating cost right now is?
Yeah, so with salaries and benefits, and all in for the station, we're right around two million, a little bit over two million dollars.
A year?
Is that again, two million?
A year, yeah, a little bit over two million dollars per year, like two point one?
Two point two, to be exact.
Two point two.
Okay, two point two, okay, thank you.
Sherry?
I do share a lot of the response concerns, and I think one of them was brought chief, to your attention earlier, when there was a football game, and the young man was laying on the field, and we didn't have the redundancy built in. And then there was another one, I think I brought it to the city manager, when we were talking about the taxes or something, one of the meetings, where it was like on the twenty-seventh of December, I was leaving around the airport, and I drove up the hill, and I was following Abundale, and I lost it past the high school up there. So, I have a lot of concerns about what our redundancy is, and about the response times, if the response times are coming from Abundale, if, if our, you know, truck is busy, and Buckeye's busy, you know, that is a, a major concern, even if it's not under one of these triggers, what would be the cost to add, I guess, I know the city manager was talking about a truck, or, or add additional personnel to the station we have, what would that cost be?
So, if we did add another crew to the current fire station one eighty-two, about one point five million?
Can I ask why? It seems like one point five to two million.
Well, because you're operating a current fire station, and all of its costs, and everything's built into that, so you're really only taking on salaries, and... So you're really only taking on salaries and benefits for the employees. And then we would, we'd need an additional vehicle for that station as well. So your costs aren't going to be as high as if you had to buy an additional vehicle. You have to now have all the O&amp;M for a brand-new station, all the equipment that goes into load a station, those ongoing costs, plus the addition of those salaries as well.
I just, I guess I thought it'd be a little less expensive, not just 500,000 different. It seems like it should be less. That's why I'm not quite sure.
Well, like I said, it's the initial loading of all the equipment into the station. So the question that I
That's where the 1.5?
Yeah, that's where a lot of that initial cost comes from.
And then yearly, what would it be after you have the initial amount in there? Sorry to put you on the hot seat, I'm just trying to figure out the money.
Yeah, you know, I think we're running right around 1.5 to 1.7 million annually.
A year, okay.
A year, yeah.
Wally?
Chief, I've got two questions. What would it cost to build a station for the building? I know we, in this agreement, it said, provide 1.4 million towards the cost.
Correct. So today's dollars that we've received on what a new station would cost, right around probably about 6.2 million.
Oh, my gosh.
So that's including everything, the design of the station, that would be the, all the work that has to go into the land, the construction of the station. Construction of the station alone, just the higher construction cost, about 4.2 million.
All right, so that's based on using what type of fire stations we have now, right? We could do something smaller or different, could we not?
Yeah.
That would be cheaper? And what about the thought of, instead of putting a four-man crew with an additional truck at the Australia Station, to put two medics and a pickup? Because 90% of your calls are all medical. And if you had a, and this has come out of the Citizens Public Safety Committee that I sat on for 18 months, and we recommended, or we asked that our fire department look at when they're responding to a medical call, that they send, you know, two, rather than the big truck and four and eight. Because there are some fire stations that are doing that, and if our concern is, is that our response time is not good enough for Montecia and Cantomea, if we had a medical unit stationed at 185, or 182, that did not go on mutual aid all over, they would be up there, then they would cut the response time down dramatically, I would think. That's just a thought.
And it would be backup, too.
And it would be backup, yeah.
Well, we had actually discussed that way back in 2006, I think it was.
Oh, okay.
And we were talking about small units place somewhere, and basically EMS. So that discussion is not a new one.
Oh, good. Well, maybe we need to have it again.
Yeah, and it was a discussion on that one.
So if I could answer
Yes, go ahead.
Some of those questions as well, and hopefully I'll keep up with all of them. So from a station standpoint, I don't know that you want to build a smaller one, because eventually you're going to have to add on, and as the population starts to grow, the call volume starts to grow, and now you're adding on additional costs in later years to a station. So it, my standpoint, is prudent to build one station once, and build it currently, as we currently build our fire stations with three bays. That station is designated to be a battalion station. So at some point, there will be a battalion chief that's down there, because most of our growth will help happen south of the Gila River. So a lot of that, you know, growth eventually in that section of the city will be managed out of that station by a battalion chief, eventually.
Now, so how many homes are we anticipating out there? Because part of that is not Goodyear. Part of it's, I mean, it's not, I mean, well, it is all Goodyear, but there's not a road over the Australia's yet. So it's going to stop at Cantomea until a road is built, right? They can only go so far. So do we know what the projected build-out is?
There are some, if I remember correctly, off the top of my head, council, Mayor, Councilperson Campbell, there are some, I believe, 4,000 units
4,000?
South of Ray Road, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
I'll double-check that at the office, and if I'm incorrect, I'll circle back with you later on, but I think that's correct.
That sounds about like a figure I've heard, about 4,000 south. So, okay.
So then, to get back to your other question, what would be the salaries for two people? It would be about 700,000 for salaries for two people. And then an apparatus, piece of apparatus for that station that could transport two people, would be similar to, a brush truck is something similar to what we have at 187. And that would, right now, they're running around 200,000. Now, that's all-in, that's all the equipment on the, on the truck, chassis, a skid, the pump on it. But now, they are very, they'd be very limited in their scope and practice. As Councilmember Campbell alluded to, that they would be more of a clockstopper. So they would be the first-arrivers. But on a structured fire, they really can't do much at all. So you're still waiting the time for additional support to come. On a cardiac arrest or stroke, they can start initial treatments on that patient, but still waiting for support to come down to that area. But in the Sonoran Valley Public Safety Master Plan, they did recommend, as areas start to develop, they develop what they call Frontier Fire Station. So two people, then eventually, as call volume, and certainly as population increases, then you add more personnel into that station to that four-person staffing.
I think, Bill, all right, Sherry?
I think that's what I was talking about, too, when I was talking about putting somebody there. So I kind of do like that idea, it's a lot, until we grow and can actually afford a full station there, which might be sooner than later. But could we, or do we have any policies, like we do for the police, where there has to be, like, this truck would stay up there, like we do with the police, we have to have somebody up there?
They would be in the automatic aid system, just like 187 is. And they, as dispatched by the AVL, so the Automatic Vehicle Locator and the GPS, you know, how they would get pulled into a call. Now, they wouldn't be recommended on many calls, because they don't have the manpower, but they do have capabilities, so that they would be picked up on other calls, they could be pulled out of the area, just like any of our other units that operate in the automatic aid system.
Joe?
I've got two, two observations at this point. First is, the two-person company is only going to stop the clock. It's the reverse of my scenario. We only know how fast they get there, we don't know how well they perform when they arrive. We know, we know based on years and years of study, that two-person EMS companies are not nearly as effective as four-person EMS companies. So when we're talking about delivering service, what we're really talking about is just getting somebody there. That's it. So if we're really looking at, why do we want a two-person company versus a four-person company? Let's ask ourselves, what level of service do we want to provide? If we want to provide just Band-Aids and a rub on the shoulder, or rub your back, then two people is the way to go. If we want to provide advanced life support, then we need to be thinking about committing to the, we need to be all-in. That's just, that's based not on emotion, that is based on the number of studies that have been done for the last 30 years. They talk about efficiency studies when it comes to companies. The other thing is, we've, we saw it in the staff report, Chief, you mentioned it tonight, and I, we keep, we've heard now about the Sonoran Master Plan. The Sonoran Master Plan was specifically written for the Montage development in Mobile, period. It was never intended to be used in the rest of the city.
It does include, just to be accurate, it does include the rest of the city. It breaks the city up into three zones. A north, which is north of the Gila's, a mid, or a secondary zone between Gila and, you know, an area that's south of, certainly well-south of Ray Road.
Chandler Heights, I think.
Yeah. And then it goes all the way down past 187. As Councilmember Stip has alluded to, it was paid for by the developers of Montage at that time in 2008. But it does include the entire city in buildup of all those fire stations. We do have copies tonight for all of you that want that, but it does include the entire city.
Joe?
Couple of things. I think Bill answered, Councilman Stip answered one of my questions, because when you were talking about a separate unit, it's my understanding always, depending on the level of emergency, two doesn't cut it. You have to have four. You have to have people also keeping the drip, somebody monitoring the patient before it gets transferred. So if you've got a heart attack victim, or somebody who's in some serious, really two, it's always been my understanding, two won't cut it, you need four.
Correct. And the way we put it in simplistic terms is, it's like a pit crew in a NASCAR race. Everybody has a very specific job that they have to do with that patient. Monitors, somebody starting IVs, somebody's drugs, somebody's talking to the physician, somebody talking to the family. So there's always a job for somebody there. And it's a constant movement, and it's more orchestrated than it is anything else. But as Councilmember Stip referred to, that is the best model, and there are, there have been multiple studies out there. Just lately, NIST has done another study saying that that is the best approach to patient care, and providing for safety of that patient and for the crew members, is to have that four-person company.
The other piece I have is, many, many, many years ago, when I was in high school, we used to have ambulances parked at the college football games, in case any, do they do that anymore?
No.
Why?
They don't. A lot of it's, for, at least for the high schools, so let's talk about the high schools. A lot of that is contractual relationship between Southwest Ambulance, which is now just purchased by AMR, they would have to have that contractual relationship with them. They use the 911 system as their level of help. But the, is it the AIA? I think that governs all high school athletics. They do require a trainer onsite at the game before the game can start. That has been a big change for them, that before, never was like that. So in the last few years, they do require an athletic trainer to be onsite, and have some way of accessing an AED, and then also a phone to call the 911 system.
Do they have to have a level in case somebody gets seriously hurt, to make sure they don't move them, or?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Most of those trainers have basic first-aid knowledge, if not a little more advanced.
Previous answer that you had when it came with the question of if we add in actual crew.
Yeah.
The station that's there right now, if you had another crew, would you not have to add more beds, expand, because now you've got more people sleeping?
We actually, those stations are set up for double company houses, so they have at least eight people in there. The one that we would struggle with would be 181, doesn't really have that setup. We could figure it out, but it's not ideal. 183 is okay, again, has to kind of configure some stuff. But all of our newer stations are set up for double company houses. Now, the, I guess the one caveat, we just got to make sure we understand, is even if you put a double crew in at 182, you still have a time and distance issue, to, you know, certainly to south of Ray Road, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sherry?
Well, my question was going to be back, because like, and I appreciate that, I don't know the difference between the two and the four, so I appreciate both of your experience and, Chief. So the four would be the, up in Australia, and we're just dealing with this one first, I assume, would be four people, and then what would be the apparatus that we would need to buy, or do, and we, how would we, what would we have?
You know, we would certainly recommend an engine for that station, and I think eventually we're going to have to look at whether or not a ladder belongs down in Australia. You have a time and distance issue with ladders coming from Fire Station 181 right now at Yuma in Litchfield, so time and distance. But for now, I think an engine would fit into that type of development, residential mostly. But as more commercial starts to come in, we certainly have to look at moving apparatus around, or buying additional apparatus for that area.
And that would be in the 1.7 million range we were talking about? Or was this the $2 million range?
Yeah, it's going to be
Closer to the $2 million. But that includes the truck?
That would include the truck, yes, ma'am.
All right.
So that, another one-time purchase included in that cost as well.
We don't have any extras lying around?
No, unfortunately, we don't.
Wally?
So if we added an additional four crew members, do we not have the ability to stipulate that that crew has to stay up at the Australia Station, just like Scottsdale did?
I'm not sure when Scottsdale did that. I'm not familiar that Scott, I'll check with their fire chief, but I'm not familiar that they did that. There is the ability to put some stipulations, but you don't want to get into that scenario, because there are going to be times when our automatic aid partners are coming in to help us. So there is a lot of give and take in that scenario.
But if we did medical people, I think it would just make sense that they would service Goodyear first.
I guess I'm confused about medical people, when you say
Well, I say medical people. Apparently, two paramedics can't take care of a heart attack patient, you need four.
Yes, ideally, but
I'm calling them medical people, but they're really fireman-medical people, so.
They could start the initial treatment, but we prefer to have four there. And they would dispatch an additional crew, even on any call, to help support that manpower.
All right, well, I'm just trying to come up with something that might work in the interim until we got a station, because we're not going to be able to do a station for a while. And if, apparently, there's a lot of people in Cantomea that seems to think this council is going to decide tonight about a fire station there, and that's not the purpose of this work session, to my knowledge. And there's been no discussion about putting a fire station there. We know it's on the horizon, but, I mean, so.
It's a disadvantage when somebody goes up there and talks that out. Council doesn't know they're talking about it.
Yeah, and we're
Then you find afterwards, I made the complaint this evening.
Yeah.
And we know who did it. And it's a disadvantage to us as council people, and it stirs the public up. It looks like we don't care. So it makes it very difficult. So I was upset today, and yesterday, getting all those emails, I'm thinking, oh, my God, you know, and when I've been told that the trigger's not there yet. So I'm confused. So tonight, while you're up here, I would really like to be, I'd like my brain to be swept clear and to actually know what we need, when we need it.
Yeah, and I think tonight's information that Christopher and I are presenting is the information that we know today, the facts, the figures, but it's also to answer the questions that had come up from council previously about what is the, what is the agreement like, where is it at, where are the triggers within that agreement? So we hope to be able to answer that question here tonight.
Well, and I did read this closely, but when I finished it, the answer was, the trigger wasn't there yet. I don't know if anybody didn't get that from that, am I wrong? So that's where I'm at. So I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just want you to know where, you know, when this discussion is concerning.
Understood.
Bill?
Okay, so going back to the agreement, the agreement calls for 4.168 million dollars to be used to build a fire station and buy a fire truck. So the money to build it, and the money to put a fire truck in it, is there. It's 4.168 million dollars. That's in the agreement.
But I thought we didn't have the agreement.
But they pay part of that.
What we, what we, if I may, Mayor, Councilman Stip, to date, we have received some 820,000 of that 4.1 million in capital cost.
And when we're ready, because when they hit their trigger of the 501st, which we already have done, correct?
The 2006 Fire Station Agreement, that resolution that the council approved says very specifically that that stipulation from 2004 has been satisfied. And it put the entire decision to pursue construction of that fire station in the city's lap. So that 2004 stipulation of the 501st building permit has been satisfied by virtue of that 2006 agreement, and the financial commitment of the developers of Newland and Cantomea. Is that clear?
All right.
No, because I'm reading the staff report, and that's not what it says. So I think we need to, we need to go through that, which is why we kind of came to this point tonight. Because the staff report does not say that this doesn't count anymore. Matter of fact, it even references the 501. So for me, this was not that clear. While I agree, Mayor, with everything that you said about getting caught off-guard and an unnecessary ruffling of the community.
Yeah.
I'm not entirely sure that, that we have it. Over the past several months, Newland and the city have been negotiating the fees to satisfy the zoning stipulations, requiring a second fire station with a 501st building. The developer of Village 10, Engel Homes, has party to this agreement, making a financial contribution to the construction of Station 804, which now we know is 180 which now we know is 186.
What are you reading? Sorry?
I'm reading from the Development and Fire Services Agreement Staff Report of May 2006. Now, there's probably 10 million other documents that are with this.
We don't have it.
I don't have it. Sorry.
But it was in, it's in the, the, the staff information.
Under the staff information?
So, uh, that is page two of seven of the staff report. It doesn't say that, that it's been satisfied. So is, are you guys telling us that, that has been satisfied?
Yes, sir. That's correct. According to the.
We gave away a fire station at 4.2 million dollars.
What we gave away, or I don't want to say gave away, what this, what the resolution from 2006 allowed to take place was it set forth those financial commitments of 4.1 million dollars capital, 7.5 million dollars of O and M. And it eliminated that 2004 stipulation of the 501st building permit. And that's in section five of the Resolution 2006 1041 that was approved.
So the financial impact on page three of the staff report that says Newland will dedicate seven acres of property. Newland and Ingle will provide a maximum of 4.168470 in capital funds toward the construction. The city will support the formation of a cost recovery program to assist Newland and Ingle. And Ingle and Newland will provide a maximum of 7.5 million dollars in O and M funding paid in 20 quarterly installments of 375. That, you mean, tell me that's not, that's actually not in the agreement?
No, no, sir. The, the, the property has been dedic, the 4.4 acres has been dedicated as indicated by the yellow star in the earlier map. They agreed to pay 4.1 in capital. We received 840,000. We agreed to, uh, 7.5 million in O and M. The city has not received any O and M payments because those were not to be provided until after the construction of the station.
Right. Okay. That makes sense.
And that's exactly where we are to date.
Okay. Cause I'm, I'm even reading the resolution and I'm just not seeing it.
Does it, what, say the worth of the property? What is the worth of the property? What is the figure?
When the value, when the property was, uh, and according to the agreement, it was, I believe, $80,000 an acre.
Okay. So that's eighty and the, okay.
And they, they'd received development fee credits for that $80,000 an acre.
This says it's supposed to be seven acres of land at 80,000 per acre, 560,000 offset in credits to be provided toward the finance.
There was 4.4 acres where the yellow star was on the map and then another three or so acres to be dedicated and another portion on the eastern side of the development.
Joe?
Um, I guess my question is, is you're still 2 million short in building, right? According to what I hear from you, is it 6.2 in, are there any best practices that actually can bring that down? Or is that a, is that a pretty decent or a pretty good actual number, 6.2 to build a fire station?
You know, that, that, that's, that's all in. Like I said, the hard construction costs are going to be about 4.2 million. Now, on, in this property, we own this property already. So a lot of that's going to be done, but we're going to need to do site work. So you always want to kind of err on the caution and go a little bit higher, come back with, uh, not wanting to have to come back to council for, for more money. But we've been working with Regis on, on these costs, uh, for new constructions. Our, to our best, you know, subject matter expert guess at, at this point of what a cost of a station would be.
So you still have to come up with $2 million roughly?
Yeah.
Okay. The other question, as I thought I heard you say, as far as the development agreement, is then the city would work to try to recover for the developers, the O and M and what they kick in. Is that some type of a reimbursement from building permits from those individuals that are building in that area? Did I hear it right? Are, are they looking to get that money back through some type of an agreement with whoever's building in that area? Did I hear, did I hear that right?
Language in the agreement, sorry, the language in the agreement talks about if there's other benefited parties, such as another developer comes in outside of what we've defined as the benefited service area at the time this agreement was put into place. You would try to seek, uh, contribution from those other future undesignated developers if they can, on a per-rata basis.
Okay. So that's assuming that Newland doesn't have the area or some other developer buys that land. Okay. I got you.
But there's future land that's not currently planned that's within that service area.
Okay. I got you. Thank you.
But we can reduce the cost of the station by building one smaller, by building one, not a battalion station. We can do some things today to, to cost save on that structure.
True. Yeah, there is cost savings on, on, uh, on construction, yes.
Cause that station was already 80% designed.
Yes.
Back in '08. So we're, the design cost should be significantly reduced.
Yep. Mayor, Councilman Stip, uh, of that 840,000 dollars of capital money that we've received thus far, approximately 170 or so has been spent on the development of the plan. So they are substantially complete.
Incomplete?
Complete.
Complete. Okay. So I, you know, I, I hate for us to get hung up on that. Well, we're already 2 million short. We built 185 with two bays. It's very functional. It's right outside Pebble Creek for a lot less than 6 million dollars. So I think we need to be, we're thinking about two-person companies. We also need to be thinking about perhaps smaller stations and, and maybe more bodies, smaller station and more, more people. That's who does the work. It's not the station that does the work. It's the people.
Can we do this? Because we have public meetings tonight and have to start on time. Is that correct?
I guarantee it.
Um, let's, can we get to the point where you do the presentation on, on the triggers and, you know, would that be?
That's the next area.
Would that be good in that? Thank you.
So, uh, back in 2014, I'd come to council, uh, to talk about new triggers and thresholds. Uh, originally back in 2008, uh, what was adopted in the Sonoran Valley Public Safety Master Plan was a trigger for a new station. And that read that 35% of the homes were, uh, three to four miles away from the station and/or 20 to 25% taking longer than eight-minute response time. And then they also, and that would trigger a, a temporary station or frontier station. The next one was, uh, 50% out of the homes that are constructed are five miles away from the station and 30% of the response times exceed 10 minutes. So tho- those were the old, 2008 is what we adopted. And that would trigger, uh, that, that second one would trigger a permanent station to be constructed. So I came back to council in, um, 2014 and we talked about new, uh, triggers for these. Uh, and as such, uh, in total response time is greater than eight minutes, 30% of the time. And the proposed residential development is greater than six miles away from a current station. And 500 calls for service annually are in this, occurring in this area, this new, the new area. Now, when I, when I did come to you in, in 2014, um, you, uh, specifically said from the council that don't think that you have to have all three triggers hit in order for you to come back to us. If you start to develop two, come talk to us. You know, we, we want to hear about the, the progress of, of this. So, um, while, you know, this, the, the next station, um, that we're going to talk about, the ex, two stations we're going to talk about, um, don't hit, um, all of them. There are ones like 186, they hit one of them where the response time is greater than eight minutes. Now, some of the developing areas down there are, you know, creeping towards that six miles away. Uh, but some of the closer pieces of it are, are four, you know, to four and a half miles away. So, uh, the, the areas is certainly starting to develop and, and grow, uh, down there.
Bill?
Okay. Chief, uh, uh, these are not, uh, my comments and questions are not derived, directed specifically at you. They're general statements about the fire service in general. We had a great deal of discussion that night about these triggers. And I sat here again prepping for this, this information and fired off a whole bunch of questions to the manager specifically about these triggers and how did we decide to come up to them?
Sure.
A response time greater than eight minutes for 30% of the time exceeds all of the national standards. National standards are four to six minutes.
Correct.
So we're doubling the national standard by, by saying we're okay with eight minutes. The six mi, the six miles away from a, from a current fire station. I don't, I have no idea where we even would come up with that. The insurance services, uh, organization, which rates the insurance company, which sets our, our insurance rates, says the stations should be, should have a geographic response area of a one and a half mile circle. The industry says if you were to take a two and a half mile polygon, change the shape and lay it in the same place, you're going to cover about the same area, but it's about two and a half miles. So that gives you side to side, five miles, but from the center, it's two and a half miles. Some places it's closer and some it's a little farther away. So even if we were to apply both of those standards, six miles is still well outside of that. And it got me thinking about when we built 182 and what point, and I asked for the call statistics for Station 182.
Yeah, it's in here.
Um, when do you, I don't know if you looked through when you were putting it all together. When we hit 500 calls for service in all of 182's first two? Did you run across that number?
So in, in 182's response.
All of 182's response.
Yeah. So they're, they're running, uh, 756 calls for service.
Right now, when did we hit 500?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand the question. Let me just get to that page in my data. Uh, they hit that in, um, the earliest I have back is to 2011. So, and that was at 589. And they've been growing on average about 6% uh, per year over the last five years. So I'm assuming that's 2009 and 2010 was when they hit the 500 mark, so calls.
So we built the station in 18, uh, we built Station 182 in 2002.
Correct.
Only, for the only reason because of the problems that we were having servicing the area because of where it was. So if you were to, if we were to use the three ands or the two ands in this scenario, we would never have built the fire station in Estrella until 2010 because we wouldn't have hit the 500 calls for service. We certainly would have been over the eight minutes. We certainly would have been farther than six miles away, but we never would have hit it because of the call volume. So I throw that out there as we look forward at Cantomea and Montecito and say, we may not be hitting it on the call number and we're using an eight or a six-mile dart throw to determine our geography, but we know that from 182, those areas are five miles away. And we're well over the eight-minute response time. And we may not hit the 500, but my fellow council members, we are pretty darn close.
So we're dealing with sprawl.
Yeah. And we are doing this to ourselves. So getting to the next area that the chief's going to talk about, that's another sprawl scenario that we keep approving households in.
Paul?
And I just, I, I wanted to, when we came forward in 2014, we realized the, what the Sonoran Valley Public Safety Master Plan had given us for triggers and thresholds. And yes, we took that into consideration, what, um, Councilmember Stip was saying regarding what the national, uh, landscape is like. And so, uh, using some of what, um, Centers for Public Safety Excellence, the accreditation model and some of the other fire stations, uh, that were constructed within the Metro Phoenix area, we tried to find something that would give us a little bit of sprawl, but wouldn't put us so far outside it that, um, we're being, every time we, we approve a new plat, we have to start thinking about building that fire station. So we, we did this in an effort to provide a little bit of relief, understanding that yes, this was a little different than what Public Safety Master Plan in, took a little, incorporated a little bit of it. But it also, I talked to a lot of the, uh, growing, uh, communities like Gilbert and Chandler, all the, the, the dramatic growth that they went through. And some of them, they told me, and even Scottsdale said, yeah, we've opened stations on less than 500 calls. So kind of given that as, as, as another trigger, but always remembering in my mind that we didn't have to hit all three in order to come back here. So, you know, again, you know, tonight is, is just basically providing that facts and the figures of what, what dealing with today in, in 2016.
So he's giving us something to work with.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think that's, that's, he's getting a message. Um, I'm, I'm going to say we have 10 minutes before I have to start this meeting. So I want you to be able to get important things out.
Let me finish that thought then, Mayor, because this triggers and thresholds was provided to us in the staff report as requiring this. This does not require anything. This is a self-imposed restriction. And we as a collective council don't have the ability to overcome that. We hit the staff report that says this is required. Well, it's not required. This is what was recommended. And, and we need to have a discussion about eight minutes, six minutes, four minutes, 100 fire stations or five fire stations. What does that mean? What level of service do we want? And as much as we want to think that the staff is free to do that, they're not. Um, if, you know, the, the chief is in a difficult position. He's got a union behind him saying, we need more people. He's got a city manager who says, holy smokes, we can't spend all of our money on fire protection. We have a community that says, we want parks, we want this. We can't build all of our stuff. Can't put all of our money in fire, fire stations. And oh, by the way, we got a police chief who's going to sit there and say, hey, what about us? We need like 25 officers a day. So it's all a balance, but we need to have the information to make the right decision. And right now, saying that this is a requirement and this is how it lays out, you need to understand the foundation for the information. And right now, it's for me, it's on wobbly ground.
I'm going to let one more councilperson speak up because we're really getting close to it. But, um, from your, what you're saying is, and what council's saying tonight, is that we need another probably work session on this. We need to be able to know, um, what our strengths are. Um, and, and there's, you know, we have to look at this. We, we just can't go build fire stations all over. They're, they're expensive. We can't meet everybody's needs to the point that they want them to be met. But we have to make a compromise here in some ways. But if there is that need and we're missing someone, missing something, we need to realize that. And, um, I understand where, uh, the staff comes from and where the city manager comes from. And you, you said it well, Bill. We're balancing everything like this because there's only so much money. Uh, and so I'm going to let you have one question and then, so can I just make the request that somewhere along the way, that we need to come back to the table on this and have a, a discussion on it? So.
When I'm in town.
Sherry, make your question, Matt, and then we'll.
Well, actually I, I just want to say, when we do come back, if we could get all the information on what is our bonding capacity for public safety? I mean, police and fire, let's, we, I think we need to have these presentations together. I think you brought a good point. Um, we're seeing a lot more calls for service for both police and fire. We're growing and that's a good thing. But we're still in our recession mode, unfortunately for public safety. So do, can we bonding? What are our, all of our development agreements where these are all going to go for police and fire? And is there any way we can use any of those impact fees, what we can use them for? What, kind of give us the whole picture, what we can use for what? And options, like we were talking about the four-man crew as a fix until we get the money in different spots. Where you'd suggest that, where you wouldn't suggest it, you know? I, I'm sorry about all of my questions, but it's just, I, I am hearing from the public as well. And this was one of the top concerns, but I do want to say both of public safety, when we saw the survey, 98, it was like 97, 98% even up south. So thank you very much.
So is that a quick one? Quick?
Real quick. Just want everybody to keep in mind, like the ballpark with this money, this 1.7, um, 1.6, 1.7 million dollars that we get annually at the end of five years goes bye-bye. So we better do something very similar like we did with the ballpark. Better have a plan of taking money away out of the general fund, setting it aside. So at the end of five-year, future councils aren't trying to figure out, where do I come up with $2 million of operating revenue? So we, all of this stuff has got to be thought out.
It's not just, it's just not the fire station.
You've got a lot of moving pieces. So.
Uh, but I guess we got to take care of a need that were void in some area. And if, if there is a need and we're going to, we don't want to miss it, but we have to be practical how we're going to do it. We can't, we're not going to have utopia here. We're going to just find a way to begin and to develop this. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting because we have a public meeting at six o'clock. So this meeting is adjourned.